We're live.
We're all, we're all live. Mary, could you just record who's here? So as far as the city council side of things, I'm calling it to order. Vaughn, it's your turn.
On behalf of the Westerville City School District, I'm calling a meeting to order. Ms. Marshall, if you would please record the members present.
Will do.
Well, we'll just spend an hour just eating. Yes, right. I wanted to give you a. We have probably a short agenda with basically John and Monica. And Monica is not here yet, so we'll wait for her. But Vaughn, would you like to start your side of things?
Sure. Just want to start by saying thank you for doing this again this year. It's a little different being virtual, so we're not all together. But it's certainly a joy to be able to come together and continue to partner together and work together for the better of our community. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to John, to you. Dr. John Kellogg has a report he would like to share from the school's side of things.
Thank you, Reverend Bell.
Hey, John, I just wanted to say that Monica just chatted. She's on, her camera's not working, so she is. But let's start with John.
Oh, okay. Welcome, Monica, welcome to everybody here this evening. It's nice to be together again, even if it's in this limited venue that we've all gotten used to. So I wanted to touch on a couple of things going on in the district and then happy to allow our board members to add in any content and certainly for Ms. Marshall, if she wants to add in some perspectives regarding finances. And then if there's any questions, happy to take them. Couple items I wanted to share. Flipping over to my notes real quick. So let me start a little bit with construction. As you know, roll back the tape. November of 2019, districts on the ballot, as is the city. We are all successful in our efforts to gain additional resources for some construction projects. So just a couple of updates with ours. The Phase One part of South, you've probably seen is done and up and running. The gymnasium and the additional classrooms. We bid out Phase Two, had a successful bid. We have begun that part of the project as well. So we have actually moved some of our teachers out of the wing we're renovating to the new classrooms and started projects on that side. Phase Two include a wing of the high school and classrooms being renovated and expanded and an update to the cafeteria. So we're excited about that project, going very well, had good bids. If you take a trip down into Manor Park, you will see that ground is broken on the new elementary school. That's on the golf course, the old golf course there. The, the, that project's moving along well. Again, another place where we had good bids, the front work we did seemed to, to bring us good fortune as we put that out to bid. So that project's moving along very well, excited about that one. The other one that's moving along is Anheuser Elementary. As we do a renovation in addition there, we are going in. Right now, we're doing the addition, which will give us not more classrooms, but enough classrooms for capacity. And that allows us to renovate the old part of the building, add walls and windows. And by adding the walls and windows, we needed additional, need to replace some of the classrooms. So that, that space is off and running too. They actually, last picture I saw, they were putting down the foundation and laying blocks. That one's moving along. So some of the, those are some of the big projects. This past summer, we also completed some of the renovations to our, our buildings, some of the easier redesigns of entryways. Emerson would have been there, been on that project, Westerville North. Trying to remember which other ones were, were in there. McVeigh and Wilder, I believe, were also done. And then a couple others, forget off the top of my head. This summer, we'll be going after a couple of the harder ones. Some of the buildings are more difficult to redo those entryways than, than others. So those are moving along. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything on the construction side. Board members, anything you want to add in terms of the construction projects that I missed? Or Nicole? Awesome. So those are going along well. That's a, that's great news. With that, where we're, what the board's involved in right now is boundary planning. Our process actually started last spring as we built some community-based teams, an elementary boundary planning team and a middle school bit, boundary planning team. It involved our staff and parents from the community participated in examining the data and starting to look at recommendations to draw about new boundaries to the elementary school and the middle school. It'll affect all of the middle schools and most of the elementaries will get impacted by some degree. We did that work in the spring, got disrupted, re-engaged in the work late fall. Where we are now is that the committee has finalized their recommendations. We're cleaning those up. We'll bring those to the board February 22nd for their first review of them. There's been opportunity for community feedback. We've incorporated, or at least looked at that and incorporated where it worked for us into the current boundary planning. So that project should be done here in March. We'll have two readings of that and finish that. That'll affect the elementaries and middle schools. The new elementary opens fall of '22. So this will give us time, once the boundaries is set, to start engaging community, particularly the community that's assigned to that new elementary with things like naming and colors and mascots. We'll start looking at naming leadership for that building and staffing process, which will be really a year from now as we, as we gear up for the following fall. So it goes quickly. The new, the new middle school is also in the design phase and moving along as well. Keep in mind, other than South, all these projects are part of the Ohio Facilities Commission. And we are building up credits towards future OFC projects in the future. So we continue that partnership as well to try and find ways to squeeze as much out of this for taxpayers as possible. So that's where we are with boundary planning. Board members, Nicole, anyone, did I miss anything in there? Any questions people might have regarding where we are with those projects? You might be the only group we present that to has no questions about the boundary planning. So. Let me jump to our equity work. As you all know, we've, we've all are in a position to meet the call for looking at issues of racial injustice, equity and inclusion in all parts of our community. And we are building on work that's been going on in our district for a while. The recent call for more efforts have motivated us to grow bigger and bolder and quicker. That began in the summer with us convening a team to put together some recommendations. That led to a document that the board reviewed earlier this year and adopted our 10 key equity targets that cover some of the big components of our work that relate to equity. So within that document will be things like diversity of our staff, professional development, examining our curriculum and our materials, looking at our discipline data, look at our student performance data. All of the, the components you would think are important to a school district when they relate, as it relates to equity. In order to build out the infrastructure to start doing that work, we have put together a district equity team. And then every one of our buildings has a building equity team. They are focused on those 10 key targets. Those teams include staff, parents, or appropriate students, certainly at the high school level. They're looking at their own data. They're looking at those equity targets, designing, looking at areas for improvement, designing action plans that'll stretch out over this year and through next year. So we're pleased with that work. We have already put into place, Cynthia DeVice and her team built that really fabulous professional development program, a five-series program that's already in place. It's part of what we're requiring from our equity teams. So that's in the place. And so I would share with you that in February, every Monday in February, we will be posting a video of one of those professional development sessions that have been run by folks in, in leadership positions who work on things with racial injustice, professors and others who are experts in the field who are bringing forward some of the professional development. This is stuff our staff engaged in, came out of very excited, very energized. It's moving us along, creating the mindsets we want. We want to share it out with the community. So those will be available every Monday in February. There's a little video that Cynthia and I put together today, introducing that. So it's on our website. So we continue that work as well, lots to do there. One of the, one of the underlying pieces in there I want to share with council in particular and the board's aware. And I reached out to Dave Coningsworth several months ago when this was going on, just to keep him apprised. We are taking a look at our SRO program. The, our first review is a program review. We've contracted with some research folks out of the Educational Service Center. They designed kind of a document review. It'll look at things like the contract we share as it relates to the SRO program, our board policy, and start to look at the goals and objectives in those documents, make sure they're aligned so we can start examining that program and make sure that it's operating in, in the 10 that's laid out in our policy and our contract moving forward. So as we get that, I will be more than happy to share that with Monica. We will put that in front of certainly at least a community group to take a look at and think about what next steps we might want to take. But I wanted to share that because as Dave and I both discussed, that SRO program is a shared opportunity. It's part of a larger part of the Westerville, City of Westerville's policing program, Enginoe Township. And so we want to partner in what does that look like and what kinds of recommendations in the future? Questions, additional comments from the board or Nicole regarding equity or questions from folks that are with us this evening?
Yeah, Belle? Is it's okay to ask? Okay, so I appreciate all the additional information. And I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about how, how all these various pieces fit together. So I know we have our diversity equity teams. I know that there is a fair degree of overlap between the Westville African-American Parent Association and the new anti-racism, Westville Area Anti-Racism Group that Councilman Wright and I are a part of. So I'm wondering if you can help me to understand how the Westville African-American Parent Association fits in with diversity teams and all, if that's the same thing, if that's somehow it's related and also plans for engagement with that group moving forward?
Sure, yes. So when we made decisions about representation on the district equity team, we included representation from that particular organization as well as PTA. So we looked for that kind of representation. So Dr. Morris is on our district equity team and participating. That serves as a conduit to, to that organization. The other group, which is rather newly formed, which is still, as I understand it, seeking funding for a particular position, still, I think, still negotiating its way towards its purpose. I'm sure over time will provide opportunity for us to partner in the future as well. What we're looking at right now is really our organization and the call for us to look at some of these areas that are both district, district related to policy and also building operations. So for example, there has to be a partnership between our human resources department and our district office and buildings as it relates to hiring and diversity because it's, you know, the way we operate, screening and application process and advertisement of positions. An initial screening happens at the district office. Candidates are then, pools of candidates are then shared with buildings. Buildings put together their interview teams. Who's on those interview teams makes a difference in terms of perspectives. So we, we need to get those systems aligned with shared understanding and training around how do we approach our hiring processes in a way that demonstrates a commitment to adding more diversity? So that's kind of the connective tissue between those. And we're still finding our way. We're, this part of the infrastructure is, we've had two, three district equity team meetings. You know, we really got rolling in November. We're, you know, still finding a way, but it looks promising. The, I'm hearing anecdotally, particularly around the professional development, that people have been very excited. I just see a lot of positive energy in this space and excited about that.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate the additional explanation.
No problem. Anybody else on equity?
When will the SRO process be concluded?
This first phase, I would anticipate having a draft of the review due in February. This part isn't that complicated. Where we go with it from there, that, I think that needs a point of consideration as to, if we go further, what are we looking for? How do we want to collect that information? And is, is the methodology for collecting additional information do well in a COVID environment? Or would it do better to wait when we're more in person and, and can have, get better results from it? So first phase, pretty simple, probably end of the month, certainly by mid-March. And I wouldn't anticipate that first phase requiring of anything from city, the chief or Monica at this point. I miss anything, board? Man, I'm either doing really well or just, you know.
How about your, your COVID?
That's where I was going next. Thanks for the transition. So let's talk about where we are with COVID. You know, we're still operating in a blended model. The opportunity for all of our staff to be vaccinated begins on Tuesday. Tuesday through Saturday, our staff will get a link on Sunday evening. They'll be able to sign up. This is part of a K-12 Franklin County effort that's being organized between the ESC and Kroger. So it is almost every Franklin County area school district, except Columbus, which goes with Columbus Public Health, and Worthington, which surprisingly goes with Columbus Public Health. Those two entities will, will do theirs through Columbus Public Health. The rest of us have all jumped on board and, you know, you got big players. You got Southwestern, Dublin, Hilliard, us, Upper Arlington, Reynoldsburg, Hannah, Whitehall. We are all in with Kroger. And we'll start this week. So first dose will be offered this coming week. It's the visor vaccine, which shortens the timeframe between the first and second shot. Second shot will be delivered the week of February 23rd for all staff. So that piece is in play. The board has asked administration to bring forward the framework for the plan for the potential of bringing all students back. And I will offer that I think that the discussion with health departments is starting to focus on this. So as we introduce the opportunity for all staff to be vaccinated, we're adding another layer of protection specific to staff because there are no vaccines for children under 16. So they're not going to be vaccinated. We know that there is low transmission rates in schools. They're not centers of spread, low transmission rates among school-aged children. We're getting our staff the opportunity to be vaccinated. The, we're wearing masks well, we're washing our hands, we're not having large group activities. What does all that mean in terms of an opportunity to consider bringing all students back sometime in the future? And that's the question we're still examining. I have not seen CDC, Ohio Department of Health, local county health department, any of those entities say that once you've vaccinated all the staff, you're okay to bring everybody back. It's been stated, the comment keeps going, in-person, in-person. And unfortunately, not enough times do people remind that the in-person includes hybrid, which is what we're doing, it has an in-person component. So we're in that, I would kind of this knowledge gaining area as we talk to our health departments about what this means. You know, I'll be honest, the, the data we see in our county today, where we're operating the way we are, if we had seen this data back in July, we would have lost our minds. Right? Case rates of 700 and 800 per 100,000, when back then we were looking at 200 and, and we were, we were concerned. You know, so what we've discovered in a four-month experiment with schools, September, October, November, December, is that what we're doing has been very effective in limiting the spread in schools, keeping kids safe, keeping staff safe, being able to operate in an unideal situation. But we've muddled on through and with what we've learned in that short experimental time and what we're learning about the vaccine, we look at the next horizon and see what's in front of us. So kids have been great when they're at school. They are not doing well when they're remote. We continue to reach out and provide services, but it's just not, it's just, and it's a pressure point on families. And we know it. That's where we're at then. Happy to answer any questions there or open up to our board. Nicole, if anybody wants to add or, or correct anything that I've, I've said.
Hey, John, I would just say one thing, and, and I, I believe I'm getting this accurate. If I'm incorrect, I apologize. In an article in the Dispatch today, I think it was, you know, there are 88 counties in Ohio. We know that. Franklin County is one of only 11 counties that right now are on the front end of receiving this vaccine for the educational world. For example, Cincinnati, Hamilton County, the only district in all of Cincinnati that is getting any of this is the Cincinnati Public Schools. And so even in the article, they said, they said something like, we have no idea why Franklin County is as fortunate as it is. I, I, I only say that because if the city council, you all, like the Board of Education, there are likely thousands of people watching this meeting right now. And so I, I just wanted to share that that's, that's a reality, that Franklin County school districts are very fortunate to be on the very, very front end of this. I have friends all around the state that are saying, we, we're not anywhere near that yet. And, and so, you know, us trying to roll it out, because some of you are parents, some of you are grandparents. Looking at you, Nancy Nestor. Some of you are grandparents and parents. And I just, I just encourage you to, to, to really consider how fortunate we are that Westerville is one of the, one of the districts in the state. 11 counties out of 88 are on the front end of this, and we're one of them.
So next week, can I be a teacher too?
Hey, we're doing bus drivers, lady. Sign up to be a bus driver.
I thought 80 and over were already eligible.
Oh.
Oh. You would know.
Okay. I'm, I'm done now, people.
I'll tell you, you know, the interesting.
Hey, John, is there any talk about suspending the statewide assessments because of COVID and the strange school year you've had?
In, in my head, every day. Yeah. We keep advocating for that. There, you know, you got a federal component to that change of administration, right? Because a lot of those tests are federally mandated. Change in leadership at the state level, particularly in the Senate side. That, that has interesting implications for K-12. It just makes sense. I mean, you know, let's sketch this out. Best case scenario, you know, the opportunity to bring kids back this spring comes and the first thing we do is hit them with state tests at, welcome back. That's fun. So, you know, one of the interesting, just sort of, so let me just share with you really where this COVID thing has hurt us the most, transportation. We had to move Blended Middle School to remote today. And we have a system in place where we rotate elementary schools on a late start and middle schools on a remote anytime we have a specific number of driver shortages. So the other day, we got wiped out, seven drivers quarantined, boom. And that, that part of our operation runs on such a thin line anyway, that the ripple effects are huge. Right? So that, that's been our most limiting staffing resource affected by COVID all year. And we're having to do it again tomorrow. Walnut Springs will be remote and two other elementaries will move to an hour delay. And those quarantines go 10 to 14 days. So, you know, next week becomes problematic. At a time when we're getting some pressure from portions of the community about, hey, vaccines here, bring everybody back. Well, you bring everybody back, but you still have this same problem with quarantine because the quarantining standards, even with the vaccine, don't change. So this, this is, it's not just that simple. There's lots of moving parts in them. You know, this board has worked hard. They have a strong understanding of all the variables. Their mind is always on families. I mean, they live it. They know it. And, you know, they have worked tirelessly all year to help provide guidance for us to, to make the right decisions. And we're, I think we're taking the right pace and right approach. So.
John, I have a question really.
So John, can I add something really quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I think it's really important, especially for community members, to hear that the spread in our school doesn't seem to be happening. It seems to be happening with sports and extracurriculars. So one of the, I think, good opportunities or just to have the discussion and excited about hearing the plan of, you know, trying to get all the kids back before the end of the year safely.
I do have a question. There's not going to be any school on the two days that the staff is getting their vaccines? Is that correct?
Yeah. So the hours for the vaccine, which we're not in control of, are 12 to 8 Tuesday through, Thursday through Friday and nine to five on Saturday. Keep in mind, all the school districts that I said are participating, there are two sites. They're going to do 1,800 people per site per day. So we, we, and Hilliard's doing the same thing. I think some other school districts are doing the same thing because we want to, we want to get this done. And we want to make it as convenient for staff as possible. And we also recognize that, so if I said, well, I'll run down to my lunch hour because, you know, hey, it's half an hour to Hilliard, 15 minutes for the shot, half an hour back, upper my class. You get down there and if there's any glitch, any glitch in the scheduling down there, all of a sudden, you know, we've got six bus drivers who ran down in the middle of the day to get their shot. They get caught up and it can't get back. We don't, we're missing six bus drivers, you know? All of that has play in it. And so the other piece is not so much with the first. the other piece is not so much with the first dose where people are having side effects, but certainly the second dose, significant side effects, as, as Chief Miller pointed out the other night. And so we put that in place for, for both sets, which, you know, the benefit of it was it affects both cohorts. But I don't like moving to that space, but got to balance supporting our staff, getting this done and also can, you know, kind of seeing down the lane, what's the potential problem if we don't do that and staff are trying to get down there and get done? And when everybody else is trying to go to the same place, right?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just saw a lot of chatter on social media today. People weren't understanding the reasoning. And so I didn't know if you guys were going to make a, a public announcement about what the logic is. Because you know, you know, the people on, on social media know all the answers, but it would be nice to nip that in the bud because I knew you were, there were proper reasons for doing that. So I just wanted to see what your reasons were. Thanks.
When we put out a communication, we made reference to providing staff some flexibility. And I think some people read that and they want to interpret it one way and, and don't want to, you know, detailing out all those points I just made may be more helpful for people. Maybe we should have done that. Maybe we can still do that, but. Yeah.
And John, if I can just, I might have missed if you said it, but just to be clear, those are remote days, not calamity days.
Correct. We were, yeah, so those teachers are still responsible for teaching and learning and getting shots. So yes, thanks for pointing that out and we, we opted not to do. I don't know what snow day is going to look like in the future after all this, right? You can't not have snow days, right? It's just.
Well, John, I, I think it's also important to note, you know, in the words of the late Paul Harvey, the rest of the story is that if we don't, if we don't allow our staff to participate in this round of vaccinations, we have no idea when they would be allowed to participate again. And so we really believe that then it's up to, it's up to us to, to help make, make it possible as easy as possible for staff to be able to participate.
Yeah, it's, it's a great point Vaughn. And, you know, when you consider what Rick said, that the state made an effort, pointed out Franklin County educators, made, set aside vaccines specifically for them, put this event together. We need to get as many people there as possible and because everything I've been told is if they don't go, they're, they're back in line and who knows when it happens. And as we've seen how, how things have changed and evolved in this space. I have a family member in Florida who's been on the waiting list since Sarasota for longer than I care to imagine. So we have this opportunity and we're going to take it. So that was all that was on my agenda. I thought I'd be short in that, but apparently it wasn't. Happy to take any other questions or Vaughn or Nancy from the rest of the board members, if there's something that you'd like to add or topic getting on or Nicole, if there's additional information you want to share, I will step aside.
Just two points. One is I want to let you all know how much we appreciate Chief Miller. Oh my gosh, he has been a wonderful partner with the schools, working with us. You know, these vaccine plans have been changing, changing and changing again. And before we were brought into this particular effort from the state and Kroger, we were working full out on a plan with the chief. And he has been just a stalwart partner with the schools in helping us to understand what we need to do and try to make that as feasible for all of our many employees as possible. So I wanted you to know what a great guy he really is. And the other thing is just kind of a mechanical piece. Some of you get what's sent from the district and some of you may not get what's sent from the district. So I'm wondering, John, if you could ask Greg to make sure that everybody on council and Monica as well, get those emails that go out. As you know how it goes on social media, people don't have to read the message to have a very strong opinion about what should be happening. And it always sounds really feasible if you haven't read what was actually said. So I think it might help you, you know, when you hear questions or when you hear incorrect statements that you might want to correct, even though sometimes, I don't know about you, but sometimes I just want to run screaming. But if we could send you that information, so you're just automatically on the list as well, it gives you more information on what's happening.
I'll do that Nancy and, and I put in the chat, I put myself, if you don't have it, feel free to use it, text or call me anytime. Nicole, anything you want to?
Uh, yeah. So I just, I want to talk about school funding, you know, it's my favorite subject. I feel like we do this every time we get together. But the lame duck was a busy session. So if, I, I don't know if you're paying attention. I know I'm friends with a lot of you on Facebook, so you probably saw some of my posts about all that. But they, fair school funding plan is, was in play. The House overwhelmingly supported it. The Senate failed to pick it up, but all the while they continued to expand vouchers for private schools and try to find other creative ways to take more money away from public schools. So we're working with the new general assembly. Senator, oh shoot, his name's just escaped me now.
Andrew Brenner?
Brenner, yes. Senator Brenner is the Chair of the Primary and Secondary Education Committee now. So if you have any connections with him, please urge him to support the fair school funding plan. He has told us that he will if it comes up for a vote, that he will vote for it. So I plan to hold him to that. We talk quite often actually. But so we, they expanded vouchers, which I don't think will affect us with the expansion that they did most recently. I think, I think that it'll, may affect us in the future, but currently based on what we have, it's not going to affect us overall. And then the fair school funding plan, like I mentioned, we're looking at a new BIM budget that the governor should release his version of the budget on Monday. And so we'll see what that looks like. He has committed to continuing the student wellness and success funds, which is an important piece to school districts to allow us to focus some resources on social and emotional wellbeing of students. And that's a really big thing right now. We're taking some of those funds to help add to that area. And we have received some federal funds. We, we've been able to offset some of our revenue losses because we have seen some significant cuts in state funding. So we're using some of the federal funds to help shore up that funding and working to try to support kids as best we can. So, yeah. That's all I have. Nancy, you're muted.
All right, I muted, so you can't hear the.
I saw your mouth moving.
But that's not unusual. I think it might be important just to know for information's sake that we have decided to become involved in litigation around voucher issue with other school districts across the state. Testifying, talking, sharing information hasn't cut it. And we continue to bleed significant tax dollars and that needs to stop. So we, we have decided to join that effort. The other thing that I think is worth kind of keeping an eye on, the question was raised, you know, about, Diane, you talked about where we are with testing. And it's, if you have the slightest cynical bone in your body, this is interesting because testing in many ways determines voucher eligibility. And thus there is a significant benefit for pushing ahead with testing kids who have been remote, who have, who have higher levels of disengagement or unengagement and lower levels of achievement across all of the districts in the state. So it'd be an excellent time to test using those testing metrics that are applied to determination of vouchers in addition to other things that are determined. So if the cynical bones in your body like mine tend to act up in bad weather, this is what I consider to be potential bad weather on the horizon. And I never trust anyone who demands the testing of children who have been unfairly traumatized by situations out of their control. There, soapbox.
I think it's important to point out that the private schools that receive those vouchers aren't subject to the same testing at, at the same time. So.
To go along with that, John, would you mind sharing just a snippet, a little bit about the work that you have been helping to spearhead as it relates to what happens once we are able to finally come all back, all in at a hundred percent? That you and some other area superintendents and leaders are looking at together, taking a regional approach to how we address the academic loss that our students have suffered over the course of COVID.
Thanks Vaughn, be happy to. So my new best friends are all the other superintendents in the area. I've never seen a group of people bond together so quickly during a crisis as we all feel kind of in these isolated roles and you know, every meeting has five minutes of therapy and then we moved into organizational work. So recently, the superintendents in Hilliard, Upper Arlington, Dublin, Worthington, Grandview Heights and myself kind of created an informal consortium together, bought in a consultant and, and our goal was to collectively build out a framework that we can package and share with our communities that really define an inspirational path forward. Once we get rolling, we realize this thing is not, there's no quick fix this thing. This is next eighteen to twenty-four months to really right this ship and feel good about it. And so we've started putting that together. The ideas of framework that we're all working from, where we're sharing ideas and potentially looking for shared resources. And then at the same time, we'll translate that framework back in our organizations with our leadership teams to put in specific strategies that are consistent with our organizations and what we want to do. So the cool thing about it is, you know, when you talk to, I talked to, I have a student advisor group, many of you know that. And last time I met with them, I asked the question, when we go back full in, what do you want? What do you want us to start? And it was to a person, stuff having to do with wellness, getting together, just being back in school together and feeling a sense of community. Yeah, 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 we're worried about our academic gaps too. But if you just start pounding us over the head with all this work we got to make up and catch up on, that's not going to go over very well. We have a unique situation. We literally have thousands of kids who haven't been in school the way they want to be for months and they're dying to come back. Think about that. They're dying to come back. You don't get that opportunity very often. I don't want to miss the moment and bring them back and then now we're in, have them go, well, this isn't very fun. I think we can make it a very positive wellness-based, leading towards the academic needs of students from the get-go and long term. You know, we've learned a lot about what works and doesn't work in classrooms, relationships, wellness, those are all important pieces. And they've, we've known that, but they've really taken on a bigger level of importance and recognition of importance amongst all of our teachers. So want to capture that moment moving forward. We learn more about that than we learned about instructional digital technology. I think we learned more about the human's condition than we did about instructional delivery. And I think what we learned is we can accelerate gains faster, not through instructional technology, but through our approaches to kids, our wellness equity, dealing with all those pieces. We will make faster and bigger gains focusing there than we will on trying to get better on computers, although that's important to go. It is my soapbox.
John, I think what you raised, each year I look forward to this particular meeting because it's an opportunity for us to identify potential ways that we continue to work together. And just before I say this, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the partnership beyond Chief Miller. But as I think about what John was saying about our students and I know how you all feel and the things that you've heard from the adults in the community, as we think about beginning the long trek out of this time, there may be ways that we as institutions can work together to help repair the social fabric that has been ripped too often during this pandemic time. So, you know, going forward, whatever that might look like, however, we might choose to work together and whatever campaigns we might want to come up with, initiatives we might want to come up with. I think it would behoove us to think about the social and emotional wellness of the entirety of the community at all ages.
Vaughn, does that conclude the school side of things? Or do you have any parting comments?
The only parting comment I would have is to encourage members of our community that when information is released about how we're operating as a district, please read it in its entirety. If you, a, a lot of attention is being focused right now on an article that was released by the CDC saying that schools should be back in. John alluded to what the in-person portion of that says. But if you actually read the entire article, what, what the CDC is suggesting is that in order for schools to be back in, in person a hundred percent, that other mitigation strategies need to be employed in order to make that as safe as possible. And among those mitigation strategies that they mentioned in the article are the closing of restaurants to in-person dining, the closing of bars and the closing of gyms. And so if you all are willing to issue a decree this evening that you're going to do that in the city of West, in, in Westerville, I think we could expedite opening schools back up a hundred percent. But absent that, there's still many, many factors that have to be considered before we could do that. So again, there's a lot, lot goes into it. We thank you all for your partnership and working together. And thanks. And with that, yep, we're, that concludes the school report.
Well, thank you all for that. Thank you Vaughn. Like to, Monica's only been here for a few weeks, probably feels like a few months by now. But Monica, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Mike. And I apologize. Thank goodness I've met at least seventy-five percent of you because right now I'm showing up as a black blob and I apologize. I jokingly said to Rick that they're going to revoke my millennial card because we're supposed to be good at technology. So forgive me. I'm going to follow kind of the same outline as John. I'll try and be quick so that we can meet our eight PM deadline. So, you know, we'll try in ten minutes to get all this done. All right. So first on the construction front, as you all know, we've been planning a new court and police facility for nearly a decade. The main reason is because our police department has outgrown their current facility. But we're also looking to bring together several departments into one area, including the mayor's court. So we did go to the voters in November to ask for a mil and point nine six mil and did receive that from our residents. So thank you very much. We have started the construction on the site. We broke ground about three weeks ago and the additions being added on. And once the addition's done, we'll move on to the rehabilitation of the rest of the facility. So John tells me everything's going great because he can see the pictures right outside his window. And he promises to tell me if they decide not to show up one day. So we have an extra set of eyes. And he promises to tell me if they decide not to show up one day, so we have an extra set of eyes. Um, outside of that, on the equity and inclusion side, um, the partnership uh, Westerville Partnership met a couple of days ago and we talked to the Global Fluency um, Group. I know the school district's used to hearing about Global Fluency, I believe you guys um, offer it to some of your students. Um, the staff did a pilot of their Global Fluency Program last year and we are running with uh, training with our um, key Team Westerville uh, Department Heads this year. So training uh, began today for some and will continue in February, March with the remainder of the Department Heads. Um, we're also still looking at ways to make sure that we are dedicating enough resources to the diversity and inclusion piece, so. More to come on that in the future. Um, at this point, I hope Ken is okay with this, but I'd like to offer him the ability to give a little bit of an update on the Diversity 365. It's a partnership piece, but we're both in that partnership and Ken's been leading the way on Diversity 365, so if you would like, uh, Ken, I'll give you a moment to speak on that.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Ireland, I appreciate that. Um, Diversity 365 uh, is in response to the um George Ford shooting and a number of shootings that happened last year uh, across the nation. And uh, the peaceful protests here in Westerville. So through the partnership, we developed Diversity 365 as a way to make diversity an ongoing uh, effort here in Westerville, not just a one and done. But something that's ingrained in the fabric of what our city is all about. Um, we're operating under three action items. One is um one is community conversations. We believe that the way to get to know one another is to listen, to listen intently. To listen for understanding, not just, not just to listen to respond. But um, as part of Diversity 365, we want to um, engage the community in uh, different conversations to find out what's going on, to take the pulse of the community and to develop concrete action steps to address those concerns. Additionally, with uh, Diversity 365, we want to learn through an engagement. Uh, by that, I mean, there are many organizations here in Westerville that's doing great work. But oftentimes we work in silos. So what we want to do is partner with other organizations to uh, leverage our resources, cast a wider net and to uh, make a more of an impact throughout our city. So that's another part of uh, Diversity 365. So one of the things I'm, I'm very excited a- about and I'm grateful for the city. Um, the um, city leadership as well as the Chief of Police. Uh, in response to the police shootings last year. We decided that one of our community conversations would focus on policing and community engagement. And rather than um, think of uh, how to engage the community in that important topic. We decided to go to the community and hold a focus group to find out exactly what are the issues that we need to address. Uh, and from that information, we would build the framework for a community conversation we plan to have this year in partnership with the Martin Luther King Junior Legacy Project. So in advance of that community conversation, we held a focus group in November. And we invited several members of the community, the police department, members of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Um, uptown merchants, uh, educators, students and the community at large to talk about policing and community engagement. And from that uh, dialogue, uh, we were able to craft questions that will be included in the upcoming biennial resident survey. We're gonna have twenty specific questions on uh, diversity, inclusion, uh, equity as well as policing and community engagement. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first time we've, we're asking questions like this and we're doing a concerted effort to um, ensure that all members of the community are aware of this survey and participate in the survey. We want to get uh, honest feedback, candid feedback. From that, we will build um, responses to what the community tells us. Um, our issues that we need to address and action items we need to take to address those things. So that's just a, a nutshell of what's going on with Diversity 365. We've got a small committee, but a mighty committee. Uh, and we are um, looking at several avenues to build upon what the city's already done in that space.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have any questions for Ken on that before I move on? Okay. Um, the last piece is just, um, if you hadn't heard, I'm new. Uh, this is my fourth week here. Uh, it has been a very exciting time and I have um, really enjoyed getting to know people and those of you on this that I have not met yet will have to find another venue and I'll have to make sure my camera's working and we'll have to meet in another date. Um, I did just recently post my Assistant City Manager position. Uh, Julie did retire last week, which was very sad and we all miss her already. But um, I posted internally and we are collecting applications right now. If the pool is substantial enough, we'll stick with internal candidates, if not, we'll um, go external. And um, I'm also just, you know, diving deep into the organization and getting to know everyone and so far, uh, Westerville has been as amazing as I had thought and hoped it would be, so. Um, again, I look forward to getting to know all of you better as time goes on. And at this point, I have nothing else to share. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks Monica and, and thank you Ken. Uh, just a few other things I just wanted to bring up. Uh, we are looking at some uh, dense development uh, on East of Africa Road. And also Braun Farm, which is near Cleveland Avenue. Uh, they promised to be dense developer, development and you could look for uh, a few more thousand in our population. So I'm sure that's going to affect uh, the school district as well. Um, another thing that uh, we're working on, um, we have another new employee, she was from Columbus, so she provides a great perspective. Carolyn Thurman, um, on what affordable or attainable housing means. Uh, it's, it's a tough nut to crack, uh, really. Uh, but what we've done is take probably one of maybe hundreds of steps that we need to take. One is we, uh, we added source of income nondiscrimination to our nondiscrimination ordinance. Uh, basically, uh, renter landlords uh, cannot discriminate against vouchers, alimony, social security, VA benefits and other things uh, that are not just W two earnings. So uh, we got that passed and I think that goes into effect uh, uh, about two weeks from now. Uh, so uh, we didn't really get much in the way of uh, response from landlords. Uh, I know Bexley did get a lot, uh, but it is, it is the right thing to do, it's not just uh, the Section Eight housing issue, it's a lot, a, a long list of things uh, to do. But affordable housing or attainable housing is uh, a topic that uh, uh, is one of our five or six strategic pillars, uh, and that one, um, right now, we're just beginning. What's going to also be impacted by affordable housing is our zoning code. Uh, that's about two hundred pages of new zoning code that's gonna come in. And uh, we're going to ban all schools uh, from our zoning code, so uh only kidding, John, maybe just your house. But anyway, we got a zoning code thread that's going through and it'll probably take uh, the balance of this year uh, to, to get it passed. Any other council members want to enter something that uh, that was big that I missed? And then Monica may have missed? Questions?
Would, would it be okay to ask for someone to maybe comment about the plans for, I think it's a veterans component to park across from the community center?
Yeah, the Veterans Memorial. I actually talked to the Director of Parks today uh, about the uh, Veterans Memorial. Uh, but Monica, would you like to pick that up or would you like, uh, I think our Parks and Rec person is uh, Mrs. Conley.
Um, what I, I can say is that we will be fundraising for that park. Um, we are getting a sizable donation from um, the Sunrise Rotary Club to start that fundraiser, yeah, Diane. And um, from there, uh, we will be going out to the public to ask for the remainder of the funds. It, this Veterans Memorial is gorgeous. I don't know if, if everyone has been able to see photos or renderings of it, but I mean, it is gonna be the likes of having Washington DC in our park. It is everything you would think of for a Veterans Memorial and more. So if you have an opportunity, I believe there's rendering somewhere. Maybe I can send you some renderings so that you can take a look at it. Um, Diane, do you have anything else to add to that?
There, and I had mute on because I have dogs barking in the background, so I'll apologize ahead of time. Um, it, you know, you guys know Randy Aller, anything Randy touches is fantastic. And I think he's actually outdone himself with this one. Um, it, uh, the fundraising has sort of kicked off Sunrise Rotary, which I think about half of us are in. Is uh, you know, really going to make it a signature project for them since it's where our Field of Heroes is. But it's a beautiful project. Um, I think Randy is, it's gonna be his legacy with this one, so um, I, I can't wait for it to be out.
Yeah, one, one thing, the, the Veterans Memorial, we, we do have it in front of the Armory. That's a small memorial and uh, that uh, will be probably in the uh, community center uh, side of things, this memorial will be uh, uh, bigger. Uh, but that's what Randy and I discussed today was the uh, the fundraising part. Alex, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I just wanted to add to what Monica said about the police court facility. I, I want to make sure people know there's gonna be community meeting space in that building, so that's a space that people could, uh, I don't know, to rent out, but at least reserve and use. We're gonna have a, I guess it's fair to say is a state-of-the-art um, training space in there that I think um, departments from around the area, maybe the whole state will use. Which we think is really gonna improve the quality of the preparation for our police, which is really important. And as is mentioned, with the court, uh, having a true dedicated per, space for the courts, we're also gonna be doing be able to do some things that we haven't been able to do in the past that we think will help address, you know, equity and uh, justice in the mayor's court uh, process as well, so. I think those are a few things that worth noting about the benefits to the community um, from the new police court facility.
Thanks Alex, I think uh, to add, uh, our nine-one-one dispatching, if you ever went up to the the top floor of our police headquarters, uh, it's really not state-of-the-art. The nine-one-one dispatch, dispatching is also uh, gonna be in that uh, in that building. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you all for uh, sorry we didn't have the, uh, the good uh, Cardone's uh, food or whatever we usually have uh, catered in, but uh, maybe next year we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Uh, really, uh, thank you all for your uh, participation. Uh, President Bell, are you ready to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so are we. Thank you all, be safe.